Any objections? See you none, so move. All right, at this point I'd like to open up the Ballin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today is August the 19th, 2015, the time is 7:10. I'd like to open up the Housing and the Finance Committee with that. And I'll read out real quick the announcement as required by the government code, section 5494, 54.3. Members of the City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and the Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. All right, at this point I'm going to ask Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco to lead us in invocation, followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to...
Father Mike.
Oh, Father Mike, that's right, and see him? Okay, Father, we're going to have Father Mike from St. John's lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to please, to stand, please do so. Thank you.
Let's take a moment of thoughts. We come together as people in city, como ciudadanos migrantes. Let's just cover the sense of honesty tonight. Caring about people, not numbers. Caring about goodness, not IRA plans. Let's come here tonight to listen to our people in a way that this city can become always a better city. Amen.
Thank you, amen. Thank you, Father. At this point, place the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you very much, and good evening. First of all, let me close on behalf of Sister Rosario's mother, who recently passed. Our deepest condolences goes out to her. And then also, another icon of the city of Ballin Park, for those of you that may have gone to Ballin Park High School, Mr. Bill Sterling, who was a longtime teacher here in Ballin Park High School, who taught for years and also a coach. Mr. Sterling, I'll just read, was a well-respected employee of the Ballin Park Unified School District. He served as a mentor, friend, and father figure for so many. Mr. Sterling is survived by his wife, also retired teacher from Ballin Park High School, Ms. Terri Sterling, and their three sons, Brian, Brent, and Bryce. And all three are products of the city of Ballin Park. So our deepest condolences goes out to this particular family, who of course are part of the history of the city of Ballin Park. Councilmembers wishing to close on anyone's behalf?
Yes, I'd like to close on behalf of my brother-in-law, Danny Sembello. He died Saturday evening in a tragic boating accident. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just want to, for the members of the public, that I will be pulling out the introduction of the ordinance of the City Council, the city of Ballin Park, amending chapter 100 of the Ballin Park Municipal Code for official police tow truck services. So I want to let everyone know that I am pulling that off the agenda at this point. All right, so at this point, can the council members have any other items they wish to share? Yes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, since everyone's here, I just want to remind everyone that we do have the street fairs going on in Ballin Park, so please join us. It's a really nice event for families and a free kids' zone, so bring your kids, it's free. And so I hope to see all of you guys there tomorrow, every Thursday. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd just also like to announce that the city has worked in collaboration with the county, the school district, and the Mount Sac College Board, and we're opening up the Americans Job Center of California. Now it will be at the adult school in Ballin Park. Normally these centers are typically in Irwindale or other cities, but this year we were able to start a new job training center that will have services for computers, internet, phone fax, resume mark interviews, employment development, which includes Cal jobs registration, job referrals, and a number of other services. So for those of you that are looking for jobs, if your children graduated out of college or the adults who graduated college and are looking for work, this is the job center to go to. Or anybody looking for any type of work, we're going to start to have these resources available to you, and hopefully we could all tell your friends about it, your family, everybody could use these resources. You know, Ballin Park happens to be the, we have 12% unemployment in the city, and I think we really need to work hard to bring the resources here to this community to make sure that everybody gets, we can lower down unemployment and everybody finds employment. A lot of times, kids graduate from college and they're having a hard time finding a job, but if we send them to this job center, it will help them, or anybody looking for work, we will have that resource available. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
One moment, please, just, I just want to, they are Mondays and Wednesdays from 8:00 in the morning until 12:00 noon.
All right, councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also want to just announce that we received another $300,000 for the restoration of Walnut Creek Park, and this puts us at more than $1 million that has been donated essentially to the city so that we can improve that park and make it available, make it beautiful for the residents of our community once again. And I definitely want to thank Manny Carillo and your staff or your dedication. This is an endeavor that has started about a year ago, and to think that we've raised more than $1 million and garnered that much support already, I'm just really excited and want to say thank you for all of your efforts and for your commitment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Mayor, today Mayor Lozano and myself attended the senior fashion show, and thank you very much to staff, that was a lot of fun. As I said, the dancers were the highlight probably of the afternoon. But I also want to say thank you to our officer, Armando Lopez, that retired a couple of weeks ago, correct, chief?
The retirement party was this Saturday, and he's official retire date, I think, is the end of this week.
So, thank you so very much for the service to our, to our community and a wonderful, wonderful officer. He will be missed, and we wish him a lot of luck in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, yes, absolutely, yes.
I just want to share that this Friday I went on a police ride along with the amazing men and women of our police department. I'd like to invite all of you to share time and speak to our police officers. I was out there with them till 4:00 in the morning, seeing what they do to make sure that our city and our streets are kept safe. I'm very impressed with them. I'm not surprised at all, and I want to thank them, chief, thank them for me. I was with Jessica Rodriguez, she's an amazing police officer, so thank you to all of you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, I will now open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. Thank you, good evening. Yeah, approximately three minutes.
Maybe we haven't done roll call.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, one moment.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Present.
Councilmember Pateko?
Here.
And Mayor Lozano?
Present, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. So at this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public communication.
Name Juan Rios. These questions are going to be for the lawyer, okay?
Uh-huh.
For one thing, being a lawyer for a city or any corporation, you need to advise whoever's in your board or anything, that they have to respect the public for one thing, okay? And another thing, Mayor, you need to address yourself a little more professional, okay? There was an incident with Shannon upstairs. You may apologize, or do whatever you want to. Like you just said around an hour ago, that we're not in 1992, but that was very disrespectful what you did to Shannon in front of everybody. All his staff was there. You know, you can apologize day and night. It's still, it's already, the damage is already done. What Pacheco called us, that's another thing, and I think the lawyer should retrain you probably, because you, we are a corporation, you know? The City Council is selected by the people. You guys cannot go upstairs and intimidate people, okay? I heard some stories, you know, everything that goes upstairs or downstairs, the people know. A day, maybe two days, you know, so, you know, they... Robert, please advise them that any corporation, if you're out of place, you're removed from the area. And you should know it. You're a lawyer, you know. I worked for a corporation that would never go through, you know? And it was just a small corporation, Abbott Laboratories, you've probably heard about them, you know? They do not tolerate any kind of misconduct on their supervisors, managers, vice presidents, even presidents of the company. I seen them get removed from their positions, okay? But like I says, advise them, we're not in 1992 or whatever, Mayor, we're 2015, okay? So act a little more professional, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on with public communication.
Hello, City Council, residents of Ballin Park, glad to see all of you here. Number one, Señora Garcia, or Señorita, whatever, you complain about this and that, but you're always late. If you've worked for my company, I had to fire you a long time ago. Mr. Trump has a right idea, out the door you should go. Number two, you've been late more years, including Mr. Pacheco, to special meetings than anybody else, I think, in the world, and you continue doing it. The mayor, he don't care. I've been telling him for three, four years, he don't care. Meetings from 2012, paperwork that has not been entered into, into city records, and you still allow it, Mayor. You deserve to be fired. I wish Trump would come here, because he'd fire you. Mr. Pacheco, you have not personally apologized to Mr. Rios or me for your comment that you made to us, and you are so holy roly pushing the issue that you want the police department, other than our Ballin Park police. You don't listen to anybody in the city. You do whatever you want, you want, and you want. You people don't listen to nobody. That's what's wrong with you three people. You voted, we know exactly how you vote. There's nobody other, people that are walking here will hear you guys vote just the way we always figure it out. We gave you guys priority parking, and you're still late. You know what I would do? I'd take all that parking that you got down there reserved and give it to the public. There ain't many people here normally during our regular meetings, but today, I'm pretty sure the parking lot's pretty full. And I wish these folks would come more often. But Mayor, you've been doing a bad job for all these years, and why people haven't voted you out is unbelievable. When you, Marlene, and I can't remember the, oh, the other Garcia, came to my house, you people are just a big joke. You know why? Because you don't do for 99.9% of the people in Ballin Park. You do for whatever benefits you three people. And these people out here, on both sides here, we are stuck with the burden that you make. And you know what? You're probably driving around telling everybody, hey, they'll pay it. We're tired of paying your tax money. And this Rome outfit, they have not paid enough taxes, but you said it's okay. I don't know where you get this from. We need revenue, and what do you do?
Excuse me, Mr. Luna, your time's up.
$2.1 million. How far do you think that goes in your account?
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Moving on with public communication.
That goes my three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes. Thank you very much.
Father Michael Teras, the pastor, St. John the Baptist in Ballin Park. And earlier today, our church was recognized in our community organizing LA Voice by Supervisor Hilda Solis for our work in immigration. And what you see is many of our parishioners here tonight on an issue that we really believe, even though it was pulled off the agenda, it is important to us, this contract with Royal Coaches. And we believe this has to be a bigger public discussion, because there is a lot of animosity historically, the last few years since I've been the pastor, last six years, between the community and Royal Coaches. It is not hearsay, it is not made up. I get it, my office, my principal has gotten it from her parents. My deacon, who runs my Spanish-speaking ministries, he hears the stories. This is not something that's a bunch of bull. It's truth, and it has to be dealt with before we discuss any contract with the towing company. I've never seen that in all my years as a pastor, as a priest, of an animosity like this. And to even think about extending something without a really strong public discussion, we need to rethink. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the parish, the parishioners, my school parents, to say, really think out what you're thinking about doing in the future. This parish is watching, and we will continue to watch as this city. We have a lot of investment in this city, we care about this city, we care about the future of this city, and we really believe that anything that happens, whether that or building housing, has to be a bigger public forum, a public venue. A lot of our people are busy people, they work. Somebody asked me, well, we have meetings, we told me, we have meetings. A lot of our people don't get home till 7:00 in the evening. Having a meeting at 5:00 doesn't make sense. Don't you think so? So I really want us to think going forward about what we do around this city. It's a great city, it's a good city, it could be better. But it has to have a sense of understanding, a sense of knowing who their people are today, and many of these people in the next couple of years will be voting. And how they vote, beyond me. But they're watching, they're learning, and they will continue to learn. And that's what we told Hilda Solis, we would agree to her as she continues her journey and her work. It's what I conveyed before I came here with our new bishop, we have a new vicar in this area, his name's Bishop Dave O'Connell, he's going from South Los Angeles. And Dave is about as passionate as I am, by the way, on this issue. And it is something I hope you will take to heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evenings, good evening, City Council. My name is Bill Salazar, and I'm one of the owners of Royal Coaches. I, I hear what Father Mike is saying, and I get it. And I also would like to clear the air, and if possible, I'd like to extend a hand to Father Mike and/or the parish to definitely have open communication. I will make myself available to them to sit down and discuss any issues that they feel they have in regards to our tow service or tow services in general. So I just wanted to come up here and, and let the council know that I'm extending a hand to Father Mike and to the parish, and I would definitely like to have open communication. So these things that, that possibly the people are thinking that we're doing incorrect, I would like to talk to them about it, and moving forward, be able to clear the air, and hopefully, if we're to come back again and around to, to discuss this again, perhaps the people will have a different understanding of who we are and what we do, and that we're not the terrible people that perhaps they have in mind that we are. So with that being said, Father Mike? Okay, thank you very much.
So you've agreed? Both of you have agreed? All right, okay, all right.
Thank you.
To meet, to meet. All right, all right, thank you very much.
My name is Tony Mojica, I, I think...
Tony, what's up, brother?
How you doing?
All right, thank you, sir.
I want to say thank you to everybody here. Like I said, it's a great honor just to stand up here. I've been in Ballin Park, I've been teaching for, at Ballin Park Facility. Manny Carillo is my boss, and we've grown a long ways. And I have, want to say that I'm very proud of our club, and this club in Ballin Park has produced five, five Olympians have come out of, out of Ballin Park Facility. And Rhonda Rousey was our last one, basically, and she is, now we have a sixth person that we're, we're getting ready for, trying to get ready for the Olympic Games. I think the, the biggest issue we have now, I think, as we all know, is you do sports, it's a very, it's being talented is one thing, but having financial help is another thing. We're just trying to help to try to get one of our players, and we have a group of players, but one is trying to get to, try to get to the next level of Olympic Games. But I know, I'm just asking if you have any, we can help us and maybe point us in the right direction, trying to help us get some of these kids at that level, that would be a great help, because we, we're very appreciative, everything we have gotten at Ballin Park. We, we're throwing our 20th anniversary here in Ballin Park, and I'd like to invite everybody to our 20th anniversary here in November. I'm going to have the Olympic team that I, I coach in Barcelona, will be coming back here, we reunite each other, it's when 1992 I brought, took Olympic team to Barcelona for Mexico, and they're all going to be here in November. So I would like to invite everybody here in the City Council. Mayor has been there many, many times, I thank him. Manny Carillo's been there many times, I'd like to thank him. Pacheco's been there many times, thank you. So I would like to invite everybody to come down to our, our anniversary on the 20th of, I'm sorry, on the 8th of November, and then I'll come back and remind again, hopefully come down. And I have one of the parents would like to speak on behalf of his son. Thank you again.
Be great, thank you, Tony, do a good job. Good evening.
How you doing? My name's Eddie Marin. My wife Debbie Marin. My son Ricky Marin. He's the one we're trying to get to the Olympics. Right now, he's 16 years old. To give a little history about him, he's, right now, he's ranked as one of the best in the United States. And that's not from Covina or Apuente, it's Mojica Judo Club from Ballin Park. They look on their roster and they see Ricky Marin, Mojica Judo Club, Ballin Park, California, and they're scared. So we're trying to get him ready for the next level, which would be Olympics 2020. But from now to then, it's a long, long road. And if we could have help from the city, that would be great. To give a little history, Ricky is a local champion, state champion, national champion. He'd been ranked in the United States for the last seven, eight years as one of the best in the United States. He's been to two Panams, one in Panama City and the other one in Mexico City. And he's been to numerous states, more than I'll ever be going to. So with the help of his sense of Tony, get him a long way. This is one of the best clubs, he's one of, he's known as one of the best coaches in the United States and probably in the world. He said Rhonda Rousey came out of this club. If you don't know who Rhonda Rousey is, she's the heavyweight, she's the women's champion, UFC's women's champion. And that's who, we'd like to get him. So thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Mayor and councilmembers, I have, I have requested, I had contact with your wife, and I have requested on September the 2nd, we will be recognizing Ricky, so be sure to be here along with, or sense, he's behind you, right? Tony? At 7:00 on September the 2nd at the council meeting, we will be recognizing Ricky. Thank you.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, moving on with public communication. All righty.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Limartiz. I live here in the city of Ballin Park, and I just wanted to echo what Father Mike said, you know, this is a great city, and I take great pride in living here. However, I do feel some concern again, at the same way as he does about the contract with the towing truck, because obviously if you get so many people to show up here, it's because there's been great dissatisfaction. So to the extent that you are thinking of extending a contract, you really need to take people's concerns, and especially the timing. I mean, obviously there is some animosity, some, I want to say even anger against that company. So to think of a long term, if you want to give them a shot, if you, if they do agree to have better treatment, it needs to be a smaller term, where they can prove themselves, and if they earn the trust of the people, then you could talk about a long-term contract. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, moving on with public communication.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Veronica Thomas. This isn't the first time I've been here to talk about the towing. The last time I was here was when we had that horrific checkpoint where people were arrested for no driver's license and Royal Coaches snatched up their cars. I was pleased to hear that we haven't had any checkpoints since then. It seemed like a victory. It seems like the community was being protected. But then I start getting, you know, emails from people, I don't know, people come to me, you know, asking for help about their cars, and it's just been an exhausting year, because we get complaints that people wake up, their cars are gone off the curb. Royal Coaches has their cars, they're charging enormous fees. I know the city gets $118 per car. Police are stopping people for frivolous reasons like bubble on their windows, window tent, and they don't have a license. Royal Coaches gets their cars. We have videos of babies being left on the sidewalk in carriers while Royal Coaches takes their car, and it's just never-ending with this company. And I feel that you're, you're bringing up this 10-year contract, because it's election time, and you want to make sure that Royal Coaches is secured in, you know, the city of Ballin Park, and I think you need to maybe look around for a better choice. And I think it's, it's kind of hard when the council members and mayor get donations from these companies, you know, these tow companies. Of course you're going to vote for who gives you the donations, and I think that's a big issue as well. But I live in El Monte, and I'm trying to keep them out of El Monte. We don't want them getting the contract over there. So it's, it's just exhausting with this company, and, you know, that's just all I have to say for now. Thank you very much.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consilio. Quiero traducción porque voy a hablar en español.
Let's get someone up there, you're going to go?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Y quiero mis cinco minutos.
On tres minutos?
No, son cinco cuando hay una traducción, cuando se está hablando en español, son cinco minutos.
No, it's three minutes, it's three, it's three, it's la ordenancia de la ciudad de Ballin Park, it's on three minutes.
Es su regla, no la de la ciudad.
Yes, it is, it's three minutes.
Bueno, mal comienzo, mayor. Pero esta tarde yo estoy aquí para hablar por mi comunidad.
This afternoon, I'm here to speak for my community.
Igual que la señora, igual que el padre May, estamos trabajando muy duro para que las personas de esta comunidad inmigrantes sin documentos agarren su licencia. Hemos dado clases para que aprendan a cómo estudiar de nuevo y cómo puedan ir a tomar su examen y tengan éxito en su examen.
As well as the lady that spoke and Father Mike, we're working very hard so that people get the classes so they can get their license. They are taking many courses so they can be ready to take their license.
Pero es muy frustrante que las personas, nuestras familias de la comunidad extremadamente pobres sigan sufriendo por estos contratos que están firmando con una sola compañía. Yo no tengo nada en contra de esa compañía, a pesar de que es una compañía tiene un trato muy despota para la comunidad cuando nosotros vamos y dejamos nuestro dinero ahí cuando nos quitan nuestros carros.
It's really difficult when we have hard-working, poor communities working really hard, and we have this company that is... despota? Okay, despotic. A company dealing with our citizens here in Ballin Park.
Esta práctica, ya sea de donde venga, se toma esa decisión en este consilio. Y a nuestras familias han tenido que dejar sus carros ahí, porque es irracional, el precio es tres veces más lo que una familia gana por una semana.
It's irrational that these families have to leave their cars there, the, the prices that they're charging, it's just completely irrational, and everything takes place here at our city council.
Estas familias siguen sufriendo por el decomiso de sus autos, y nosotros estamos pidiendo que no firmen un contrato ahorita presentado, sí? Tiene que ser una consulta pública, porque esto es un tema que está lastimando no solamente la economía de nuestras familias, sino toda la dignidad de cualquier ser humano. Y como católica y mujer de fe, es imposible estar tolerante ante esta situación.
We're asking that you not, that you look at this contract and not sign this contract, that you look at this contract, it's not tolerable that, that you are doing this as a Catholic...
That you look at this contract. It's not tolerable that you are doing this as a Catholic and a woman of faith. I think you should look at this and the treatment that we're getting by these contracts.
I know that there are times of elections. I don't want to doubt the integrity of these people here. But here I have, after a prayer in my church, 249 signatures.
I know it's election time and I don't put in question the integrity of these people. But in one hour at my church, I got 200 signatures.
These families, if they don't vote, the 249 families, their families do vote. And there are times of elections.
If this number of families don't vote, but the families do vote and they have family members.
Any contract that you sign with this company always falls into our pockets, not those of you. And the community of Baldwin Park is the one that pays for these contracts. Just like they signed the contract with the waste management, it affects our contracts. Your bad decisions affect our pockets. One more question. Why do they just finish signing a contract with this company? What's the point? All the way, they haven't finished the 5 years they signed with them. What's the point of signing a contract for 10 years and this time?
I don't understand the point of why are you trying to sign a different contract? Have you just signed a five-year contract? Why do you want to sign another contract?
Well, we'll see you in the elections, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you in the election, Mayor.
Thomas Carey, the answer to this is oust the leadership. The ones that are up for election, out. Don't keep voting the same people in. They keep extending the contract in an election year. They want to get rid of your police department, too. You don't want that. You don't want the sheriff here. You don't want him here. Sheriff is, you think you got litigation now. Wait until you get them in here. Keep your police. Your police are fine. I lived here for 19 years. No problem getting the police to the neighborhood. But if you keep electing the same people, you're gonna keep having the same problems. It's a vicious cycle. They pull this every election year, lots of certificates, lots of plaques, lots of stuff like that. I noticed things like that. I don't know. This going on and on. They've got a contract. It's good for, what, another 3 years? Why do you want to renew it for 10? Because it's an election year? You need some campaign contributions? Maybe your funds are lacking a little bit? I don't understand. You got a new contract. You want to give them a new contract, then you got to open the bidding process. That's the way it's supposed to be done here in America. We are in America, United States. You swore an oath of office to uphold the laws in the state of the Constitution in California. As for the towing, they're only doing what the state says they're supposed to do. It's state law. You can't argue with that. If they say you're gonna tow the car and you don't have a driver's license, don't drive. And don't give your keys to an unlicensed driver either because your auto insurance won't cover it if there's a crash. You may not know that. But as for this election stuff, they're hard up for campaign contributions. They're trying to extend this contract. There's no reason to extend it. They got, what, 3 more years? Let it play out over the next 3 years until the election in, what, 2015, 2019. Why does it have to be now? Why can't it be in 2016 or 2017? Why now? The only thing I can figure, it has to do with money. Running a little short, Ricardo, maybe? How about you, Monica? You're up for election. If these people stop re-electing the same people and tell all their friends to vote for whoever else is on that ticket and shift the power of the regime, you'd get change here. But if you keep the same cycle, 3 to 2, 3 to 2, it's always Ricardo, Manny, Emmanuel Lozano, and Monica Garcia against the other 2, Susan Rubio and Cruz Baca, you're never gonna get anywhere. It's just gonna keep going on and on and on. I don't understand. The controversy brings a full house. Maybe I should have stayed here. I think I probably could have got a full house. Stir up a little controversy and everybody and his brother will be here. It shouldn't come to that. There's no reason to extend that contract. Just let it run the way it is. But you need that money to run the campaigns. I don't cost money to do that. Give somebody else a chance.
All right. Thank you very much.
Give somebody else a chance to run. There's some change here.
Hello, my name's Joe. My real name is Alejandro Armandares, but I go by Joe Armandares. And if you guys want the change, I just got accepted to run for mayor for Baldwin Park on November 3rd, 2015. So if you guys want to come talk to me, I'm on the ballot for November 3rd, 2015. Joe Armandares. I've been in Baldwin Park since my parents came from Juarez in '77. So like I said, I've grown up my whole life here. I belong to St. John's myself. And I want to see a change because I'm tired of how our city's looking terrible. And it shouldn't be like this. So if you guys like, you guys can meet me outside. And anything you guys want, I think I can be the mayor that is here for the people because I don't have no one backing me up. The only people that can back me up is people that want change. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. My name is Salvador Cano. I need someone to help me.
One moment, please. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alejandra. You're awesome. Telegras. Thank you.
Last few months, I had an experience here in Baldwin Park. One of the students that helped me work, they took my truck away because there wasn't a light functioning on top. I called him on the phone, the student, and I told him, "Tell the police that if I get here in 5 minutes..." A few months ago, I had an experience here in Baldwin Park. One of my workers, they took my truck away because there wasn't a light functioning on top. I called him on the phone, the student, and I told him, "Tell the police that if I get here in 5 minutes..." I got there in 5 minutes. He didn't want to give a chance. They took my truck away. At that moment, they told us, "You can take it today." I tried, I came here and went to take it. The policeman hadn't arrived. His name was Espanto. And the truth is, it's an Espanto. Then I realized, when I was here in the police station, I realized that other people were coming. And we started to communicate. What's happening?
So the guy called me and I told him to tell the officer that I'd be there in 5 minutes. When I got there, they didn't give us a chance. They took the car. The police officer was Espanto. And in reality, it was a scare.
And then, when we were here, we realized that the same policeman, in those few hours, stopped more or less like 7 people. The day before, another person had arrived, he took 2 trucks. He picked up metal. For a month, I paid more than $400. And I felt very, I felt bad for myself, but also for the people who were coming. We all earned a little money. And to pay in 4 or 3 hours, more than $400, the policeman didn't come?
So there was a group of people here and we were all talking. And we learned that during that time, they had brought in about 7 cars. The previous day, they had already also brought some cars in. The police officer didn't arrive. He wasn't here. And they said we could take the car out that same day. But the thing is that for a day, it's about $400. And we don't have that kind of money to be paying for our cars.
And I realized that it's something very unjust. Even though we were together with the other people, we were together with some policemen. But we weren't heard and I felt bad. And I told them, when I received the invitation to join, I said, "I want to go because I feel hurt." I feel hurt because of that.
I felt it wasn't just. I felt bad for the rest of the people also. We got together and we decided, we were told to come and have a meeting. And we came to have a meeting with the police officers. But we felt that we weren't heard. Our voices were not heard and I felt hurt because of that.
Hopefully, they can hear us, the class that earned a little money.
I wanted to add, I forgot to say this, that... I hope that you listen to us and I want you to keep in mind of what I said, that we don't earn a lot of money.
Gracias. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Alejandra. I know. And she's good. We'll have to hold on there for her. All right. Good evening. Buenas noches.
I'm resident here in Baldwin Park for many years, more than 28 years.
I've been a resident of Baldwin Park for more than 28 years.
My comment is brief, but I'm ashamed of what happened to me about 2 years ago. I borrowed my son's car from his son.
About a year and a half or 2 ago, I loaned my son my car.
He was born here in Baldwin Park?
He was born here in Baldwin Park.
The only way he was born, they took his truck away for a rent. And that day, he didn't have his license on his car.
They took the car away from him at one of the stops that they had. And the reason why they took the car is because he didn't have his driver's license on him.
To take my truck from Royal Coaches for a day plus the release of the police, it's unfair that they have charged me more than $500 just for 2 days.
To take my car out of Royal Coaches for 1 day, it's unjust that I had to pay more than $500.
And it's shameful how the Royal Coaches treat you when you go to their office. They treat you bad. As a citizen of this city, I would like to have an analysis of the contract that you're trying to extend to this company. Because we are not at all happy with this company to what the rates they charge. Gracias.
Gracias a usted. Thank you very much.
Hello. Hi, my name is Nicholas Thomas. I want to address the issue of Royal Coaches as well. I think it's an injustice and I think it's been an injustice for a very long time. The fact that we had to deal with 30-day impounds, the fact that we had to deal with people getting their cars towed away for no driver's license. And Royal Coaches' response to that, and what Jim and Bill will tell you, is that, "Well, there's nothing we can do about it. We're merely doing our job." And, you know, there is some truth to that because they pride themselves in being willing to go above and beyond and get involved and throw money at fundraisers and donate bikes. But the reality is, the only time they're willing to get involved is when it affects their pocketbooks and when it affects their contracts. Beyond that, they're willing to do absolutely nothing. I've been to Royal Coaches and I've talked to people. And one of the things I'm really glad is that people are sharing their stories. Because the fact of the matter is, is that each impound has a story. I've sat there and watched as a mother gets her car towed away handcuffed and the kids are watching and Royal Coaches smiles as they take their car away at a checkpoint. It's inappropriate, to say the least. And the fact that we have a company who just runs off bad morals is ridiculous. It's time for change, you know? And it's just a matter of time until Royal Coaches is out of Baldwin Park. Because we will not stand for it. I can assure you that the majority of Baldwin Park is against it. And that, you know, another fact is, is that we have a lot of undocumented, unlicensed drivers, you know? It's a good thing that the legislation came out that they're now able to get their driver's license. But that doesn't prevent the fact that if you look back at any period in time, you go back 5 months, 1 month, 2 years, look at 1 month of why each person got their car towed and you'll see that it says 22651 vehicle code, no driver's license. That's why people are getting their cars towed away, 90% plus of the drivers. It's ridiculous and it's time for change, you know? Royal Coaches needs to go, you know? And they're padding the pocketbooks of El Monte City Council now, too. And here they are at Baldwin Park. And they're not willing to do anything to create change for the people. And I really, I'm playing with you to really help us create that change. And to listen to the people. I can assure you that the people, you know, want out of Royal Coaches. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All righty. Hey, hello. City treasurer's sitting down there. Thank you. Buenas noches.
Okay, my name is Carlos Gutierrez. The reason I'm here is because I had an experience just as well as they did. I feel sorry for what happened to me.
I'm embarrassed to say what happened.
It happened, I was 15 years old, they took my truck away.
They took my truck away for a day and a half and they charged me $1,010. The receipt is right here if you want to look at it.
Okay, so we could just, because everything's being recorded, I'm gonna ask everyone for silence. All right. Thank you. Because it's being recorded. Yeah, so go ahead and repeat that, Alejandra.
His car got towed away for a day and a half and he had to pay $1,010. And he has the receipt right here if you want to look at it. I'm just embarrassed. That's all I have to say. They want to become millionaires from the night to the day. If you want to look at it, I have it here.
Pass it down over here. Yeah, that's fine. Excuse me. Stop. Please stop or I'm gonna ask you to leave. Do not interrupt. Do not interrupt, please. This is a professional-level meeting. Thank you. Okay, so, yeah. Okay, well, you know, let's get a copy of it so we could hand it out to the council members. Can I have it tomorrow? Well, you know what? Go get a copy. Okay. You'll get copies. Okay. All righty. It's all? Okay, gracias. All right. Thank you. Moving along with public communication. Thank you.
Council members, members of the audience. Certainly, we are a tow company and there are many tow companies throughout this valley, throughout the United States, that are going through this same particular problem. I think that what the public perception here is that the tow companies are taking the car away and robbing the public. We are not doing so. Their fight, I believe, would be with any tow company, whether it be Royal Coaches, A, B, C, D, E, F company. It does not matter whether it's Royal Coaches. Royal Coaches performs a service as would any other company that would take on... Royal Coaches performs a service as would any other company that would take on that responsibility for an agency. Your fight will continue whether it is Royal Coaches. You cannot defame every company that will come along your path and that will not work. We are people, we work hard, we come and make a living every day. We abide by the rules that are governed by the state of California. The legislators hand down what these rules are, the police departments enforce these rules, we only assist in enforcing these rules. Until these people that do not obey the laws understand that they do not have the right to drive, the privilege to drive on these public roadways and do so responsibly, they will always have this fight on their hands. Secondly, the gentleman that just walked up, he has a bill for 1,000 dollars. Clearly, the bill is 190 dollars for the tow, 50 dollars a day storage. If he does not have the means to pick up his car on the first or second day, yes, he is certainly penalized. That is not our fault, okay? Keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you. No, Father Mike, Father Mike, Father, Father Mike, cannot, Father Mike, Father Mike, Father Mike, you cannot come the second time, just one time.
He just did.
Excuse me, Father Mike, Father Mike, please.
He just did, mayor, mayor, he just did.
No, that's his brother, it's his brother, Bill went first, that's his brother.
Oh, sorry about that.
Father Mike, thank you, we'll talk, all righty.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Thanks for hearing us out today. I was, I'm here to talk about Royal Coaches. This is our parish, I belong to St. John's, I'm a school dad, you know, my, my padrino can't come visit me because he's afraid of getting his car towed. You know, some people can't do nothing about their situation about...
Hector, it's being recorded, so speak to the mic.
Okay, some people can't do anything about it right this second about not having a driver's license. Does that mean that they can't live? Does that mean they have to live in a cave? They can't go out? They can't drive? They can't do something? No, that's crazy. Now, if you guys want to help the community, you want to talk to us, lower your prices, man. You know, you're just like any other tow truck company, cool, everybody has to make a living, just lower your prices, you know? Less, uh, you know, a two-year contract, cool, you know, if you do it good in two years, pretty sure people will come in here and speak, hey, you know what? They're the cheapest company around, let's keep them around.
No, excuse me, excuse me, stop, please stop, go, go ahead.
But, you know, you guys have earned the trust of our community, I've seen every single one of you out in the community doing things that don't get publicized or whatever, that's why you guys get voted in. Now, I'm asking you to consider this contract because it's unfair. I don't think that if they get a 10-year contract that, that'll create a system of checks and balances, that'll just create, you know, they could do their parts, their, their prices for whatever. You know, if you get penalized for not picking it up after the second day, hey, wait a minute, why? You know, if you charge 50 dollars a day but if you don't hurry up and get the money, we're gonna charge you more? How's that fair? That's not fair. These people work really hard, I've seen them work really hard, show up Saturdays and Sundays to help out at our church, they come from Almani, from La Puente, from everywhere to do service in the community of Baldwin Park and we can't let people be afraid to come into the community or to come out of the community, you know? And that's just what Royal Coaches has created by what I call is unfair charges, you know? That's, you know, 50 dollars a day, that's reasonable, but, you know, being charged for not picking it up two days, no, that's not fair, that's not just. So I ask you guys to reconsider voting on 10 years and making it a smaller contract, you know, so they can prove themselves, you know? Everybody proves themselves, you guys have proven yourself, that's why you guys get voted back in, you know? There's a lot of negative people that are saying stuff, but hey, I see you guys doing stuff, so that's why I believe in you. So I ask that you guys do the same and believe in the people of the community and consider a smaller contract. Thank you.
All right, thank you Hector, thank you very much. All right, muy bien.
First of all, I want to clear the air for all the people that know why the thing was pulled off the sheet, was because the city attorney got a phone call from the DA's office and the DA office was notified of the illegal contract that Mr. Pacheco and his cohorts were trying to pull off. Now, since I got Father Mike here because he's not here very often, but I want to let him know that it's his parishioner, Mr. Pacheco, that causes all these problems and made these stupid contracts up because it's election time and he's running short on money, so is Lozano and so is Garcia, though all three get a hefty deal if that got passed. We all know election year, it happened two years ago, they tried to extend it again. The contract is at a certain time and that's what they have to abide by. There's no extensions, there's no good buddy deals and just because it's election, you're running short on money and Pacheco's the biggest money gatherer out there. We got another thing on the contract with his buddy Sid Masavi to give him a 50,000 plus 100,000 carte blanche on working on city contracts because he's not happy with the 10,000 dollars and the council approves the rest. But Pacheco needs campaign money, so whatever buddy deals he can put through there, he's gonna put it through. And when, when I talk about you, Pacheco, why don't you stick up for yourself instead of having Manny stick up for you? And I'm aware of the First Amendment rights, Manny, and you have the First Amendment right to lie to the people that I'm lying up here. But you know the thing that I have every time I come up here? I got the proof, I got the evidence that you're a liar and anybody up here that I make a statement of something, I have the facts. Now, you went in and said I lied about your FPPC thing, well, why don't we go through the list? Your China trip, you remember the one I turned you in? Cost you 200 bucks, that kind of choked you up. Then you had to pay 475 dollars back to the city, it took you four months. I kept after you to pay the city back because you never went to a conference, but you weren't gonna pay it till I finally brought it in in a public request and you finally had to pay your 475 dollars back. Then we got another 200 dollars for late filing. You also have one that I filed just recently in June for another late filing on all your forms. Pacheco had a 300 dollar one in the FPPC on 2011. So you want to call me a liar? I got the papers here from the FPPC that says that you guys are liars. So let's not start that game back in '08 because I win, Manny, just like I did with Marlin and I did with Ben Aronno. You want to play that game? You want to call me an outsider? You want to call me a liar? You go ahead and do it and I'll make you look like an idiot every time. And Pacheco, I'm glad Father Mike is here to see it and understand it's you behind these contracts that are pushing this tow contract. I see your car over there all the time, I know what you're doing and it's all about money.
Excuse me, Mr. Tattle.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay. Moving along, thank you.
I need a translation, please.
Oh, yeah, okay, move on. Alejandra, you go, girl.
Buenas tardes, mi respeto para todo...
Puede hablar a la, the microphone, please, thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi respeto para todo el jurado.
Good afternoon, my respect to all.
Good afternoon.
Ya tengo alrededor de 30 años aquí y he tratado de ser buen ciudadano, que ya me hice ciudadano.
I've been here for about 30 years and I try to be a good citizen, I, I've become a citizen.
Creo que la comunidad debe ser escuchada y ver cuáles son sus deseos de tener compañías para una mejor ciudad.
I think the community should be heard and listen to whatever they would like to have as a company.
Royal Coaches está hablando de reglas que la policía debe seguir, está bien. Yo perdí un carro, hice un reporte a la policía y luego me lo encontraron.
Royal Coaches is speaking of rules that the police is supposed to follow. I lost a car and I did a police report to the police department.
Lo que pasa es que la gente está diciendo de las, digamos, irregularidades que Coaches comete. Por ejemplo, la policía me entrega un papel donde todo está perfecto, el carro, no hay ninguna irregularidad, no, cajuela abierta.
For example, people are talking about the irregularities. For example, the police department gives, gives me a paper about my car, that everything's in perfect condition, there's, everything's working, there's nothing damaged.
No, la cajuela no está abierta.
The trunk is not open.
Y todo está en perfectas condiciones. Cuando yo llego a Royal Coaches, me entregan mi carro con la cajuela abierta y cosas perdidas y raspado. Entonces yo pregunto por qué y dicen que ya venía así y que ya estaba el carro así raspado. No quise hacer yo problema para sacar solo mi carro porque era un carro antiguo.
I get a report from the police with everything in working conditions, the trunk's not open, everything's there. When I get to Royal Coaches, the trunk is open and there's things missing. I don't want to make a big deal or do a report.
Es por eso que se debe considerar a esta compañía para que no cometa más irregularidades. Gracias.
Gracias a usted.
That's why you should consider this so this company doesn't come in any more irregularities.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, muy bien with public communication. See no further interest and I declare the public communication closed. All right, this part, council members have anything to share?
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. You know, we do live in a democratic society and I'm, I'm very protective of, of that. I appreciate that you've come out to express your concerns and to share your concerns with us. I also appreciate that Father Mike and the owners of Royal Coaches are willing to talk and to listen to each other because I, I don't think that we can really fully understand each other until we engage in that conversation. And that's why I really appreciate that you're all here tonight, listening to some of the stories that you have, you know, I mean, I could certainly empathize and in some cases this is the first time I'm hearing about, you know, some of your experiences. So I really do think that this is a beginning and really appreciate the spirit of not only the church parishioners but also Royal Coaches and willing to, you know, engage in that conversation. For our police department, I know that our police department was mentioned, what I would ask our chief is for us to look at the policies of, you know, maybe fix-it tickets versus, you know, some of the stories that have been shared here tonight about like their car being towed away for like a bubble or something like that. If you could just, you know, kind of chime in on that, I think it would help, you know, add any clarity or, you know, just to be part of this conversation, I think it would be helpful. But, you know, I do want to say thank you for coming out and specifically, you know, again, it's, it's really about communicating and the fact that you're all here tonight, I think that most of you are here with a genuine spirit and, and trying to improve the quality of our, of our community's, you know, lives. And so just want to let you know that I've heard your concerns and I think that it could really translate to something positive. I really hope that you guys do get together and we certainly are here to listen to your concerns and to do what we can to help facilitate that. That's all I can say.
All right, thank you. Mayor, if I may, thank you. Hold on, it was, I would like to... Let me, let's hear first, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Buenas tardes a todos, quería decirles que me da mucho gusto que hayan venido a platicar con nosotros, nuestra responsabilidad es escuchar todas las historias y tomar acción. Me da mucho gusto que el señor de Royal Coaches está dispuesto a platicar con ustedes, pero yo le quería sugerir a la ciudad que se responsabilicen para formar el foro en donde podamos platicar todos, no nomás Father Mike y el señor de Royal Coaches, hacer un foro en donde podemos usar nuestros recursos para mandar cartas a la comunidad, para que todos, no nomás los que están aquí, que todos tengan la oportunidad de atender y también decir sus historias y preguntar preguntas. Entonces, una vez más les doy muchas gracias por estar aquí.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
I just wanted to say, you know, that I'm really glad that we had this opportunity to hear the stories. I'm really glad that Royal Coaches is open to discussion, but I want to suggest that the city take responsibility to create the forum so we can use our resources to advertise it and make sure that everyone gets invited. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much at this part, oh, council member, go to the...
Oh, mayor, thank you. What I'd like to say is I want to, first of all, again, thank all of you for, for coming here. I know it's a very emotional issue, I know a lot of you share a lot of deep concerns with your families and members and I just want to let you know that I've been a mediator for a lot of the issues, a lot of you that are out here today, I, you know, I've worked with you to mediate with Royal Coaches and solve some of the issues and misunderstandings to make sure your, your cars weren't towed away or, or returned immediately. You know, one of the issues that we, we have to deal with is that the state passed various laws and you can't, you know, drive without a license, you know, now that's been changed and there's a lot of issues that we have to work with to be able to, you know, to work with you to try to control the tow services. I've been leading a lot of issues to change a lot of the policies, you're working with our, our police chief and our police department, getting ideas from a lot of you. I know in the, last year when there was a lot of toes that were going on or the year before, I sat down with a lot of church members and we came up with ideas that we brought in policies to change those issues. I know they're not perfect yet, I know there's still issues that are out there that, that we got to resolve and so I think by open communications, it's important that we all sit down and, and continue to work on them. I've heard some issues here was, you know, the, the policies that we still have, probably starting to be changed, the cost of towing services, we can still look at that and, and try to see what we can do as a city to try to modify some of those issues. So I just think by dialoguing, it's important that, that we all talk together, that we all sit down, I'm open to that, you know, call me on the phone, I'm willing to hear you or in a group and talk more about, you know, the policies that we have. And I think a lot of you came up with some legitimate ideas that we could really work around and try to, to, to move forward on that. Unfortunately, there's some people here that are, are going to flame the fans of hatred and animosity. There's an election year, there's a gentleman here that's running three candidates and he's promoting them and making outlandish statements and, and, and issues and he represents several companies and, you know, and it's important that you understand and distinguish the candidates that, that are making statements here and who they're being supported by. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor.
Vice mayor.
Buenas noches, buenas tardes a todos ustedes también, yo quiero decirles y muchos de ustedes yo conozco por, no nomás ir a la iglesia pero también todo lo que hemos luchado aquí en nuestra comunidad y quiero que sepa que yo siempre los he escuchado. Yo sé que tienen desde el 2009, que me puede acordar yo antes de ser concejal, que ustedes vienen aquí a decirnos qué son sus, qué son los problemas que están pasando. Hemos tenido juntas, en donde nos hemos juntado con el jefe de policía y los capitanes para tratar de resolver estos problemas. Quiero que sepan que yo siempre voy a seguir trabajando con ustedes, no nomás es algo de pasado, esta es mi comunidad, yo soy nacida y criada aquí y no nomás estoy pensando de esto porque son, es tiempo de elecciones. Yo siempre estoy con ustedes, con el apoyo para ayudarles y también escuchar qué podamos hacer para trabajar juntos y seguir juntos con comunicación porque la comunicación es muy, muy importante. La voz de ustedes es muy importante para mí en nuestra comunidad. Sin la voz de ustedes nosotros no sabemos cómo seguir adelante. Tenemos nuestros piensamientos pero ustedes son los que nos ayudan para poder movernos adelante y es lo que quiero ver yo, a mejorarse nuestro pueblo, a mejorarse nuestra gente para que nosotros también tengamos la voz, para que nos escuchen en nuestros derechos. Muchísimas gracias.
Mayor. Do I need to translate?
Yeah, well, yeah, you should, you should, you're good.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for, for those of you that did not understand me. I just want to thank everyone for being here and to say that your voices, I have been hearing your voices since 2009, so it's not something new, the stories are the same. Maybe the names changed, but the, but you have been since 2009 telling us your stories. Thank you so very much for sharing those stories with us and know that I am, I am very much into the communication of trying to work together. This town is my, is my passion, this town is where I was born and raised and I really feel like we need to work together in order to... Y realmente siento que necesitamos trabajar juntos para avanzar y avanzar. Y sin sus voces, sin ser oídos, no podemos avanzar con ustedes. Pero su voz está siendo oída, siempre será oída. Y sé que mi puerta siempre está abierta, la mayoría de ustedes tienen mi número de teléfono celular y siempre estoy disponible para que me escuchen. Así que por favor, estoy muy abierta a escuchar sus ideas y, por supuesto, algunos de los problemas que pueden ocurrir porque esa es la única forma en que vamos a poder crecer. Así que muchas gracias.
Sí, miembro.
Gracias. También, saben, olvidé darle kudos a la iglesia por tener esos cursos sobre la licencia de conductor. Si hay algo que la ciudad puede hacer para facilitar, saben, por favor,告诉我们 porque sabemos que esto es algo que nuestra comunidad necesita y solo ayudará a nuestra comunidad y hará que sus vidas sean mejores. Así que si hay algo que podemos hacer, por favor, no hesite en contactarnos. Creo que esto es algo que, saben, podemos involucrar a nuestros representantes estatales y ver qué podemos hacer para facilitar eso también.
Bueno, gracias. Bueno, primero, déjame comenzar al respecto del individuo que apareció aquí. Indicó que estaba en el oficio de abogado distrito. Es un lobbista, tiene candidatos, está corriendo y es lo que llamo como un mentiroso congenital. Ahora, la razón por la que digo eso específicamente es porque este individuo aparece aquí y la Constitución de Estados Unidos permite que cualquiera venga aquí y mentir outright, literalmente mentir. La Constitución protege el derecho de esta persona y él es el individuo ganador del premio que lo hace todo el tiempo, sin ninguna evidencia en absoluto. No me interrumpa, por favor, no me interrumpa. Bien. Quiero primeramente decirle, declararlo una persona que está al fondo. Vinio y dijo que según estaban investigando esta, ¿cómo se dice en español? La grúa con el departamento de proclardía de Los Ángeles. Les voy a decir ahorita, les voy a decir claramente ahorita que eso no es cierto. Es una persona, desafortunadamente, que la Constitución de los Estados Unidos permite a él que pueda venir aquí y puede fabricar la información, es lo que hace. Eso es lamentable. Y solo quiero decir real quick sobre este caso en particular, a este punto. Saben, hace dos años, cuando algunos de los puntos de control estaban fuera de la comunidad, dije muy claro que los vehículos mismos no iban a ser detenidos durante 30 días. Y eso pasó a pesar de que el estado de California solicitaba o requería que si un vehículo se levanta y la persona no tiene una licencia de conductor, es un 30 días automático y esa es la realidad. Así que me lo tomé a mi cuenta en este consejo con el apoyo de los miembros del consejo que no sigamos la ley del estado de California. Había muchas discusiones. En Ballon Park, hay 75,000 residentes y recibí muchos llamados de muchos individuos que tuvieron su opinión versus mi opinión personal, pero me tomé esa posición. De hecho, dos de aquellos que están aquí, y no los señalaré, fueron algunos de los que no me están de acuerdo, pidiendo al jefe que los oficiales de policía no detuvieran los vehículos durante 30 días y que si un individuo estaba conduciendo el vehículo sin la licencia de conductor, si el pasajero tenía una licencia de conductor, ese vehículo debía ser dado al pasajero. Ahora, tal vez no funcionó así todo el tiempo, pero eso es lo que dije muy claro. Déjame decirles, hace como dos años o posiblemente más de tres, yo como alcalde le pedí al jefe de policía que no siguéramos la ley del estado. La ley del estado, cuando una persona está conduciendo su vehículo y no tiene su licencia, se les quita automáticamente 30 días. Es la ley del estado de California. Yo como alcalde le dije al jefe de policía que no íbamos a seguir la ley del estado de California. Tenemos 75,000 habitantes en la ciudad de Ballon Park y una gran porción me hablaron, me hablaron, me dijeron que no estaba en el acuerdo, lo que hice yo y entiendo. Tienen diferentes opiniones y tenemos que respetar a todas esas personas porque sabemos que están ustedes aquí, pero a la misma vez tenemos que reconocer que hay diferentes personas con diferentes opiniones. Así es el proceso. Así que lo que también he pedido, además de eso, fue muy importante para nosotros, es poder trabajar con muchos de los individuos en toda esta comunidad. Y Royal Coaches suele ser un negocio en la ciudad de Ballon Park. Ahora, lo que están haciendo aquí, están regulados por la CHP de California, así que solo podrían cobrar una cantidad específica para cada individuo que se levante. Y esa es la ley estatal de la CHP de California. Quiero también acordarles, este negocio de grúas aquí, por el estado de California, ellos están trabajando por la ley que ha expuesto por la patrulla, sí, CHP del estado de California, así es que ellos tienen tan, ¿cómo se dice? Regulado. Regular, no pueden pasar a cierto nivel porque es lo que ellos tienen que ser por la ley del estado de California, CHP. Así que solo quiero dejarlo muy claro. Ahora, saben, todos tienen derecho a venir aquí y decir lo que quieren decir y respeto eso. Todos nosotros aquí, hemos estado aquí por muchos años, yo mismo desde 1979, y he visto cambios en esta ciudad. Y esta particular empresa ha sido parte de esos cambios particulares en distribuir fondos en toda la comunidad. Así que los respeto por eso. Ahora, independientemente de lo que sea, déjame dejarlo claro. Las ciudades que nos rodean, West Covina, Covina, el monte, sur del monte, no hicieron lo que hicimos, no llevaban los vehículos durante 30 días. Estaban llevando los vehículos durante 30 días. Pueden haber tenido el mismo calor que estamos teniendo aquí o lo que han tenido los medios también. Así que quiero dejarlo muy claro. Quiero también aclarar algo. La ciudad, la ciudad del monte, la ciudad de West Covina, la ciudad de Irwindale, del sur del monte, las ciudades que están alrededor de la ciudad de Ballon Park, ellos también podían hacer lo que hicimos nosotros en esta ciudad de que un carro cuando la grúa lo levantaba no se iba a quedar por 30 días. Así es que ellos hicieron los total 30 días que se detenía el vehículo. Y en Ballon Park hicimos algo total diferente y es una decisión que nosotros tomamos aquí. A este punto, solo quiero decir que espero que ambas partes sean capaces de concordar o no. Y, por supuesto, todos tienen su opinión personal y tengo que respetar eso. Nuevamente, hay 75,000 personas en esta comunidad que tienen una opinión diferente. Y recibí muchas de esas opiniones cuando tomé tales acciones particulares. Así que quiero dejarlo saber a todos. Con todo respeto también, ojalá que los dos partidos puedan hablar, comunicar para nosotros también resolver este problema. Quisiera que lo que están haciendo aquí también pueda ocurrir en las otras ciudades. En Ballon Park, creo que tomamos el mayor hito y eso es importante para nosotros saber, pero creo que tomamos la acción correcta para poder trabajar con todos los residentes aquí en la ciudad de Ballon Park. Yo como alcalde le voy a decir ahorita, claramente creo que hemos hecho mucho más que para los emigrantes sin licencia que cualquier otra ciudad aquí en el valle de San Gabriel. Aunque nosotros tomamos, ustedes han estado aquí con sus quejas, fuertemente, los respeto por lo que han hecho hoy. Así es que vamos a trabajar y ojalá que podamos resolver este problema y a la misma vez también reconocer este negocio, es negocio como cualquier otra ciudad en el condado de Los Ángeles. Bueno, en eso quiero terminar. Así que gracias. Gracias.
Gracias.
¿Se habla en español que sacaste el artículo?
Sí, sí, lo que les hice en este momento, no se va a votar, lo que hice, lo saqué de la agenda hasta que hablen los dos grupos y ojalá podamos nosotros resolver este problema. Solo quiero decir real quick que en realidad sacé el artículo temprano. Así que a este punto, espero que tengamos una conversación y lleguemos a una solución amigable. A este punto, miembro del consejo, sí.
Mayor, creo que concluimos ese tema, pero ayer invité a todos a nuestra fiesta de calle y no sabía cuántas personas aquí hablan español, así que solo quiero tomar el tiempo e invitarlos en español si eso está bien. Anteriormente invité a la gente a las fiestas que tenemos en la calle Main cada jueves y quería tomar la oportunidad de invitarlos en español, no, me di cuenta cuántas personas hablaban español. Todos los jueves en la calle Main de cinco a nueve, por favor acompáñenos a las fiestas que vamos a tener hasta septiembre nueve, me parece, ¿verdad? Y bienvenidos, gracias.
Okay, gracias, muchas gracias.
Uno más, Susan. Y algo muy importante o muy divertido que va a pasar mañana en la feria esa de la calle Main, va a estar la lucha libre.
Oh, eso es correcto.
En la Ramona y la Main y todo es gratis, menos la comida y todo, ¿verdad? Pero la lucha libre es gratis, por favor traigan sus niños, es muy divertido.
Alcales y supremos, antes que eso, una cosa más, que ya dije en español, la ciudad está trabajando con el distrito escolar, la escuela de colegios de Montserrat para abrir un nuevo centro de trabajos. Y es un programa que abre, se abre el lunes y es para que todos puedan conseguir trabajos. Muchas veces ustedes, sus hijos graduan y no pueden encontrar trabajo, pueden ir aquí a este servicio que es parte del estado, el gobierno federal, para que todos ustedes pueden ir a buscar trabajo ahí. Gracias.
Bueno, gracias.
Sí, Ricardo. Les vamos a llevar volantes tocante eso de los trabajos a las oficinas de los servicios sociales ahí en la iglesia de San Juan y también van a estar en la escuela de los adultos. Gracias.
Bueno, a este punto, voy a ir adelante y pasar a Consejos Calores y he solicitado sacar el artículo 12. ¿Algunos miembros del consejo quieren sacar el artículo?
Sí, voy a sacar el artículo, ¿dónde diablos está? Siete.
El artículo número siete.
Y voy a sacar el artículo 16 para discusión, por favor.
El artículo número dos.
Discurso. Y el artículo dos.
Okay, así que tienes el artículo dos, siete y 16. Bueno, así que a este punto haré un motion para pasar Consejos Calores con el exceso de artículos dos, siete, doce y 16. Ese es mi motion.
Yo también, perdón.
¿Algunos objeciones? No, eso está bien. Okay, el artículo dos, que es la aprobación del acuerdo exclusivo de negociación ENA con la Roma Development Corporation para una fase dos de desarrollo mixto orientado entre Ramona Boulevard y Ballon Park Civic Center. Miembro Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, después de leer este artículo y discutirlo con el desarrollador, decidí... Okay, ¿por qué no tomamos un resumen de cinco minutos? ¿Quieres hacer eso? ¿Por qué no llamarlo?
Okay, tenemos un resumen de cinco minutos. Gracias. Oh, hey, Ricardo, un pregunta antes de olvidar. Bueno, cinco minutos y ya estamos. Oh, Gina Yala sigue aquí. Hey, Sandy, no lo veo ahí. Hey. Bueno, estamos de vuelta en sesión a este punto ahora mismo. Miembro Ricardo Pacheco ha solicitado la aprobación del acuerdo exclusivo de negociación ENA con Roma Development Corporation para una fase dos de desarrollo mixto orientado entre Ramona Boulevard y el Ballon Park Civic. ¿Quieres decirlo desde allí? Okay. Sí, sacó ese artículo.
El artículo número dos.
Okay.
He perdido el rastro aquí.
Okay, aquí vamos. ¿El Roma, la fase dos? ¿Podemos moverlo para una discusión más? ¿Le das atrás? Hagamos una revisión. Voy a ir, así que, ¿quieres dejar tu motion?
Te dejaré mi motion si lo mueves.
Okay, entonces voy a moverlo para traerlo para una discusión más.
Yo también.
¿Algunos objeciones? No, 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 no. Bueno, este punto irá el artículo número siete.
El artículo número siete, mayor.
Vaya, señor.
Este es un acuerdo contractual sobre tres empresas que pasaron por un proceso RFP y fueron seleccionados. No es solo para un grupo individual, así que solo tengo algunos cambios que quiero hacer. Uno, un cambio en compensación, esto está en la segunda página, amendment to agreement for services. Mi motion sería eliminar el artículo siete, compensación, el artículo B y luego en el artículo A, la tasa de notales debería ser 120,000. Y también un cambio en el resumen donde habla sobre los diferentes... Donde dice, y agregar, inspecciones y servicios de construcción, me gustaría agregar administración contratada, incluyendo ingeniería de valor, constructividad y control de calidad. Y esos son algunos de los problemas que creo que están faltando en nuestros contratos. And those are some of the issues that I think are missing in our contracts.
Councilmember, could you repeat that for me so that I have it down?
Okay.
You're modifying the actual contract from the DAS, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so under items, on the summary, on the one, two, third sentence, where it says, "And would add", you would add...
At the top, right here? Right there?
Or the staff report?
Yes.
You're attempting to change the actual contract, is that correct?
Right, right.
Okay, go ahead.
After the word "add", we would put "contract administration including value engineering, constructability, and quality control"? Got that?
Yes, and then on the contract itself, Councilmember Pacheco, you want that under...
Item seven, compensation?
No, this would be under sort of the scope of the contract, it appears. And so maybe we should add this in as paragraph three under A, additional scope of work.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Oh yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so under A, additional scope of work, A1, after this sentence, building inspection and plan check services in addition to other services specified in the agreement shall also include contract administration?
Hold on, let me see what this reads here.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember?
Can we ask that this item come back to us once, you know, some revisions have been made?
When they will come back?
So we're not doing it here?
Okay, well, let me just make this change here then. On the compensation section? It says, "To the proposed", on the back page.
Yeah, I have on the compensation section, under seven A, eliminate fifty, the word fifty, and the number is 50,000 and add 120,000, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then I also have the elimination of paragraph B in its entirety.
Yes.
And those are the only changes we currently have to this agreement. If you would like to add to the scope of work, it should go under A, additional scope of work. And you should read into the record exactly what you want into there.
Okay, so that would read, "Contract administration including value engineering, constructability, and quality control."
And that sentence is going to be added under A, additional scope of work, A1, at the very last of that paragraph, is that correct?
Yes. Alright, that's my motion.
Alright, I'll second.
No, 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 I'm not, we're not done.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I would like to see that they would still, if there's any contracts that come up, I would still like to discuss this a little further before we move forward with this, but I would also like to be sure, I mean, it's been working so far alright with Director Dan Wall for him approving whatever contracts or whatever needs to be done. I would like to see what kind of an impact this is going to bring to the expenses of our city, especially after we've just renewed all the labor bargaining negotiations. So I would like to see what kind of an impact this is going to be to our taxpayers for us to go this route. And then also, I would also like for the discretion of Director Dan Wall to still put it out for bid or RFP, so that that way we still can see, you know, who is giving us the best work for the money. And I mean, it's nothing, I just want to be sure that we are answering to the taxpayers for whatever expenses we have.
These, first of all, are already typically projects that already are funded. They're not taxed necessarily, they're special funds only in this area. And second of all, this was already an RFQ, so the contracts have already been negotiated. And this is to typically in engineering, they do it in this format so that the projects can move along quicker. Since they've already been RFQed, they already go off a list and just negotiate the price and that's what our Public Works Director would be doing. So that's why I'm making this change. Instead of coming back, doing RFQ, come back here and do it all over again. Typically what they do, and this is done in all cities, is they do an RFQ list, and then you go off that list and then you negotiate the price. And then that's looked up to the director.
But I would really like to bring it back for discussion, if you please.
Yeah, well, I made a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
I would like some input as well.
Go ahead.
Well, see, I'm usually, you know, we have a lot of discussions about a lot of different things, but this one contract in particular, when it's contracts, it really does bother me, you know, that here on the DAS, we're changing it, we're going from $10,000 limit to $120,000, which is significant. And at the very least, as councilmembers, I want the courtesy of at least hearing this information and not having to change it right here when we don't even have time to absorb the information, read the contract to its totality to make sure that we are doing it correctly. And so I also would like the opportunity to read it, take into considerations the changes that were proposed, and be able to do it in a manner that, you know, that it's good for the city where we're taking our time with these, you know, we're going from $10,000 to $120,000 and we're not even thinking about it. I really would like the courtesy next time to at least look at it once it's retyped and redone, so we can make sure that there's no errors. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to also continue the item.
Okay, that's fine, Mayor, we can bring it back. You know, Mayor?
That's fine, go ahead.
We've approved contracts for a quarter of a million dollar for a park, and you guys didn't RFQ that one, so I'm just concerned why you guys would do this.
Okay, so at this point, there's a motion?
Move them on to the next meeting, thank you.
So you're dropping your motion?
Yeah, I'll drop my motion.
Oh, okay, alright, so at this point, this will come back the following month. Alright, okay, so at this point, we have item number 12, which I pulled out, of course. Item 16, review of the current application and consideration of appointments, reappointments, or removal of members of the Recreation and Community Service.
That was mine. And I would like this continued, please, to the second council meeting in September, only because some people have approached me that they would like to submit an application and they feel that they didn't get proper notification.
That's fine, that's fine, let's do it. Alright, so at this point...
Are we done?
Yeah, we're gonna go to the houses, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and... You have something at the end, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Oh, basically, that item, I just wanna have direct staff to prepare the proper documentation to place the POA, I'm sorry, the police ordinance for a vote of the people at the next agenda. I mean, I'm sorry, at the next election, which will most likely be in June.
Okay.
Give staff time to prepare the paperwork to put it in the June election.
June 2016, right?
Right.
Yes.
Alright, real good, fine, thank you. Alright, so at this point, before I adjourn, I just wanna thank Mr. Dan Wall.
Yes.
Been sending you some photos of some of the mediums and all that, so we could just keep on them. Sorry about that, the only reason why residents are asking it. Hopefully we could get those signs on there, 'cause some people still watering their lawn and they're not, no, well, why is the grass dry?
Yes, we're working with Valley County Water District. We're partnering with them for those signs, doing a cost sharing and getting the language to be accurate on those signs that we will put in the center mediums very shortly.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
And Mayor?
Yeah, real quick, I'm gonna open up the public hearing at this point, item 13, which is to conduct a public hearing and, following the public hearing, approve the grant fund provided by the Edward Ryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. So at this point, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone who specifically wants to speak on this particular subject? Okay, how about oppose? No one? Alright, at this point, I'd like to declare it closed. At this point, I'll move to approve this particular hearing. So, okay, any objections? Seen none, so move. Item 14, conduct a public hearing and consider approval amendment to the city's municipal code adding language relating to cottage food operations in accordance with the state law. So at this point, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Allison Zammite, I've been a resident of Baldwin Park for 22 years. I'm hoping all of you received the email that I sent you last week regarding getting approval for cottage food operations. Thank you, Mayor Protimbaka, for acknowledging that you received my email. I have been anxious since January of 2013, when the state of California enacted this law. It's AB 1616. I'm curious to why we're not, there hasn't, there hasn't been no real discussion as far as approval, not approval, that type of thing on it. And if anybody has any questions regarding cottage food operations, I'm pretty well-versed on the subject now, since I've been dealing with the Health Department here in Baldwin Park regarding how to get one and what other rules and regulations. So, I don't know how this works, but I would like to know when, if possible, you guys would vote for or against this...
So are you opposed, or are you...
I'm for, I'm for it. I have been...
I thought you were just gonna say some difference.
You know, I am for it, because I have been waiting for this to happen. And it's exciting, because I make chocolate, so it's a very simple thing. And I know all the rules and regulations on what you can and can't do, etc. Working out of my home, under the guidelines that I have to, and making this chocolate and selling it, if it goes great, then I can open up a business here in Baldwin Park, if it's successful. Right now, in order for me to make chocolate and sell it at festivals, boutiques, etc., I have to get a health permit. Add a commercial kitchen, that means I have to work out of a commercial kitchen, I have to get the health permit there. But they charge, commercial kitchens charge $25 per hour in order for you to work in their kitchens. For me, that is just not feasible, because my items that I sell, I make chocolate stackers for $1.50. My highest thing would be about $9.99, $10. So that's not feasible for me. But I have had a lot of excitement from people that I give these to as gifts during the holidays, for Christmas, birthdays, Halloween, Easter, etc. It's basically seasonal for me. And I have been approached by several different promoters on different boutiques, festivals, etc. in the state of California to maybe work for, I mean, to get a space in their booth. I mean, get a booth at their location. And I can't, because I have to have my health permit. And so I'm kind of at a standstill right now. And I'd really like to, I'd really appreciate it knowing when and if, yes, no, that this is gonna be on your table.
Alrighty, appreciate that, thank you very much. At this point, anyone opposing chocolate, no, excuse me, this item? Seen no interest, I now declare the public... Oh, this is opposing, though?
Well, I don't know whether it's on the opposing or for. My concern is that it doesn't open the floodgates to illegal street vending and things like that. That'd be the concern for the city. I don't live here, but you know, that can get a foothold if it gets away from you. Who's gonna police these things and make sure that everything is done the way it's supposed to be? I'm kind of in the middle, because I'm not sure what this is about. She said about making chocolates, so at least I have an idea. But you don't wanna open the floodgates for illegal vending and things like that at the same time by, you know, you know what I mean? Just opening, making a mistake and opening it up too much. Who's gonna control who makes what, basically? What's going to be allowed in reference to, you know, food handling and that? Because that is risky. The hospital's busy enough, they don't need any illnesses. So I just wanted to make mention of that, that be careful what you allow and how far it goes. Because if you go too far with it, you could end up with a lot of illegal street vending and other things. You already have a vending problem here. That's one thing about San Bernardino, they keep after stuff like that and they take the stuff away from them. So, they don't even do it in my neighborhood, they know better. The people there will call like that, I don't even have to do it. So, but this thing of, just be careful what you allow and how much, and how you're gonna control and police it. Okay?
Alright, thank you very much.
I'm gonna sit in the middle, 'cause I don't know whether to oppose or to be for, because I don't have the details, you know, about cottage foods and things of this type. Just know that it could open up illegal vending and illegal operations and things. $25 to use a kitchen, while you know, the kitchen has health, things they have to buy and abide by. But it's a slippery slope at best. Nothing against her chocolates, but be careful with this one. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Did you wanna rebuttal to that? Yes, what is your name?
My name is Allison Zammite.
Thank you.
Okay, the county of Los Angeles has rules and regulations. If you go onto their website regarding cottage food operations for Los Angeles County, it gives you a list of whether, and you go by this, on whether you would qualify to do this. Once you've done that, you have to follow so many different rules and regulations that the Health Department has, wants to enforce. You have to have ingredients on everything, you have to go get a food processor's license, you have to actually go get the permit. Anyone helping you, you can have one employee, or you can have a family member, but anyone helping you has to go through that course. They talk about, you know, through the course, of course, you know, through the course, it'll show you how to do the hygiene, etc. Thank goodness, I've already, I know all about all of that already from past experience. But there's all kinds of rules that you have to follow. You can't just go vend on the street. You can't just walk down the street and sell your items. You have to sell them at a fixed location. And at the location that you're selling it at, not, you have to actually pull a permit in that city also. So it's not only a Health Department, it's not only getting the health permit here in Baldwin Park, but if I go to San Bernardino County or Riverside County, etc., I have to actually pull a permit in that county also for the days that I'm gonna be working at a festival. Noise, traffic control, there's no issue on that, because it's just me and my chocolate. A freezer and a microwave. But like the gentleman was saying, you know, street vending, that type of... This is not even on the same level as something like that. You cannot, you know, sell it like you go on the street, sell it in front of your house. That isn't what the law is. So, I hope I did answer.
Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I will go ahead and move for the ordinance, 134.
Mayor, I did have some questions from Amy.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Yes, thank you, Amy. You know, I mean, you know, listening to the applicant here, I can understand where you're coming from. My two concerns have been more of the traffic and signage, and I think I mentioned this in the past. For our zones R1, R3, and RG, what signage is allowed in those zones? Any?
Related to cottage food, or just in general?
Well, I've read the language and it says that there's, that no signage will be allowed.
That is correct.
Except what is allowed in these zones.
Pretty much what is allowed in those zones are house numbers, for example. What is also permitted are, for example, if you have a multi-unit complex, the name of that complex.
Yeah, but there won't be any advertising allowed, or anything like that? And if that does pop up, then we could enforce that.
Yes, we can.
Okay. And then as far as, so I understand this is kind of where, you know, food will be produced or manufactured, or whatever. But nobody will be, there won't be traffic, like people coming in and out of this, of your home?
No.
You're not gonna be selling from your home?
No, no. As Allison stated, they make the stuff there, they put it in their car, they go elsewhere.
Okay, and so in this ordinance, it specifically states that they cannot sell?
That is correct.
Okay, I didn't see that.
It's somewhere.
Somewhere, it's in there.
I'm sure it is.
Alright, let's be sure. You also explained it when you gave us the presentation.
Yeah.
I think similar questions came up, and you did explain all of that. Thank you.
So, Amy, you're sure that it's in here, as far as no selling, correct?
No third parties or customers are permitted to dine, so they can't have any dining.
Okay.
And it says no outside sales.
Okay, well, I'm not sure with that, how that... And you, can we... Okay, well, I'm not sure with that, how that, can you, can we refine it to say? There you go. No onsite, I mean, could that, does that affect the business at all?
No.
You know, when you're placing orders and things like that? Okay.
No.
Maybe we can tweak the language then, to have no onsite sales, and I think that will avoid any, you know, come and go issues that we may encounter in the future.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I, I go ahead and close the public hearing, and go ahead and move, uh, for the ordinance, one thirty, one three seven, oh, oh, with the amendments, excuse me, yes, thank you very much, the amendments have been noted. Yes, we're gonna go ahead and bring this item back, is that what we're gonna do?
No, no, we can, we can move the...
No, no.
Second hearing?
We can move the item.
All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move for, uh, the ordinance, uh, one thirty-four, one...
Second.
Yeah, seventy-four, excuse me. All right, any objections, seen none, so move. Item number fifteen, which is conduct a public hearing, and following the public hearing, adopt a resolution to accept and adopt the congestion management proposal, CPM, local development report. So at this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposing? Seen none, I'd now declare the public hearing closed. At this point, uh, councilmembers, unless you have any questions, I'll move for approval. Hello?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Any objections, seen none, so move. Congratulations, by the way, on the chocolate. Can't, can't wait to try it out.
I was gonna say, did you bring us any samples?
Yes, next to you. Well, we got a second here, and bring them over, so we're gonna try it out and share it here. All right, so at this point, I will move to adjourn the, the city council meeting.
Second.
Thank you, any objections, seen none, so move. I will now, um, open up the finance committee, we have consent calendars, uh, I will move, excuse me, the fin, the, the finance authority, uh, at this point, consent calendars, uh, move for, mm, there's none, uh, move to adjourn, adjourn the finance, any objections, seen none, so move. At this point, I'd like to open up the housing...